City Council Committee on Public Health, Safety and Environment will meet on Wednesday, March 29th, 2023 at 6:00 PM for the purpose of discussing an open meeting law complaint technical issue with the Zoom link for the Wednesday, February 22nd, 2023 meeting. This meeting will be held in person at City Council Chambers, 93 Washington Street, Salem, Massachusetts, second floor. Individuals may listen, view or participate remotely in the meeting via remote participation platform called Zoom through either of the following ways. Please kink the link below to join the webinar. Password 059650 or telephone 877-853-5257, toll-free or 888-475-4499. Webinar ID 88261124055. Every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event we're unable to do so, matters requiring a public hearing will be posted on the City Salem's website or audio video recording transcript or any other comprehensive record at the proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. The agenda today, as we discussed, is the open meeting law complaint technical issue with Zoom link here for Wednesday, February 22nd, 2023 meeting. From the committee today, we have remotely Counselor Watsonfeld, we have Counselor McLean, Counselor Merkel and Counselor Cohen. And joining us as well is President Stott. So with that, I will read the complaint and then we'll go from there. So the complaint from Mr. Kapantis here. Web page, the meeting agenda, both on the city website and published PDF list, the location of the meeting as at City Council Chambers, 93 Washington Street, second floor via remote participation. Furthermore, there were three listed for remote participation. Via the Zoom link listed in the HTML party of the city's webpage. Number two, the via Zoom link listed within the electronic PDF listed on the city's webpage. Number three, via telephone and Zoom ID, which was listed on both the PDF and the HTML page. Remote participation was not available via any of these methods. And depending on which method you were tried, you were provided with different answers. If you tried option one, you received a message that the meeting would be held on March 3rd. If you tried option two, you received a message stating that the host was in another meeting. If you tried option three and entered the meeting ID above via phone, you were given a voicemail message that the meeting was not available and then hung up. I have multiple screenshots from the multiple if you would like to see them. This is a violation because the meeting was not open to the public via remote participation. This could have been prevented if the links to the meeting were verified and validated at the time of the posting updates were made. So what action would the body like to be taking up the response of the complaint? I would like the following corrective and preventative steps taken. Preventative steps are important because this is not the first time errors related to remote meetings has occurred, but rather continues to happen on a repeated basis. Space is limited, so I have attached a Word doc that lists out the corrective preventative actions being requested. Corrective actions requested. Number one, at the Public Health and Safety co-posted with the committee of the whole, play the recording of the previous meeting, allow for public on the matter. Number two, invite the presenter back for the same meeting and allow for public questions. Preventative actions requested. Number one, create a written procedure for posting of remote meetings of all boards and committees that include the three following steps. A, hyperlinks will be verified by the clerk when postings are made. B, hyperlinks will be verified by clerk when the amendments are made to the postings. C, committee and board chairs will verify hyperlinks are working at least 48 hours prior to the meeting started. And finally, D, all staff board members who operate Zoom meetings will attend an introductory course on the Zoom platform. So with that, I'd like to have our honorable city clerk come up here and give a little background on the matter.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me tonight. First, I want to say as when the complaint came in or when this was noticed, Maureen took a look at it and, you know, she admitted that, you know, she made the mistake of the posting of, you know, copying and posting the wrong URL to the meeting notice. She couldn't be here tonight doing a private commitment, but she wanted to make sure that, you know, she wanted to know that, you know, she, she admits it was her mistake. But I wanted to go over the process with you in terms of kind of how this into the details of how this happened. I kept having some discussions with her so I could understand it. So on January 30th, Maureen was posting two meetings for Public Health, Safety and Environment at the same time. And the one meeting was for the Wednesday, February 22nd regarding James Davis from Bay State is that started at six. And the second one was for the March 2nd noise pollution meeting that started at 6:00 PM also. And those original ones were posted correctly. Then about two weeks later, I know the chair asked to amend the time, to amend the time of the February 22nd meeting from 6 o'clock to 7 o'clock PM. So at that time, I guess Maureen went into, she has a file that she keeps copies of her last meeting notice. So she has like sort of a template to use. So she only have to change the time, the date, the meeting notice subject, the meeting notice subject and the agenda on the back. So that, so she doesn't have to rewrite every word on, on the agenda. When she did look at the, at the last, she did look at the last four digits of the Zoom, the URL Zoom account, which were the same that she had on that, on that agenda that she saved. So she, she, she did check something, but it wasn't enough because they were the same last four digits. But that meeting notice, let's see, wasn't published on, that never hit the website, she said. So when it was noticed, she had to amend the meeting notice. So there was a third one. So she again used the same one now that had the wrong meeting notice, the meeting link. And because that one had to be amended to show that we wanted to make sure that everybody knew that the meeting was going to open at six and then recess to seven and then come back. So if you notice like that, that meeting notice, that agenda and the password, I guess turns out to be the same one that was for the March 2nd meeting. So it was just that, that was how she explained it and how it occurred.
Thank you, Ms. Simons. With that, I would love to get some, provide our city solicitor, provide some details on the matter as well.
At this point in time, the way that we are posting our meetings with both in person and hybrid being equally important, I'm recommending that the corrective action be taken as follows. That the Public Health, Safety and Environment Committee co-posted with the committee of the whole, reschedule or have a second meeting and invite the presenter. I understand that, pardon me, I have a cold. I understand that there was just a presentation and no vote was taken at that meeting, which is a good thing. So I'm recommending that he be invited again, parties that were here, that we, it may be simpler to have on the meeting notice the link to where we will post the recording of the first meeting so that folks who want to watch it in advance will have an opportunity to do that, to catch themselves up on what was presented at the first meeting. And in addition to that, that this committee discuss what remedies or what recommendations you want to make to the clerk with respect to how to make sure or ensure that the meeting notices are properly posted. I suggest that they be verified, that they be verified if there's an amendment. I showed Eileen and I will send out an email to all of the clerks pointing out to them how to, how to interpret the, the codes. You can't just look at the last few numbers, you have to look at the whole length of the, the address, the web address. So I will do that in coordination with ITs to make sure our staff have that. So again, recommending that the, that there be another meeting scheduled on this matter. I understand that you may be bringing in a, an order for a resolution with respect to that. So do that at the same meeting and ask that the presenter or presenters who sent a summary of the material that was, was discussed and that public testimony be allowed at the discretion of the chair. And in addition to that, this committee consider recommendations for corrective action or preventive action in the future.
Some thank you, Beth. So with that, does, do any of the counselors have any questions? Counselor Cohen?
Thank you, Chair Varela. So I have more comments. So I do like the corrective action regarding the meeting that the solicitor had. I would like to just include that when the chair does the introduction, that the link to the recording is stated at that point because there might be people who aren't here in the room who may want to access that. And I mean, people, we all make mistakes, so I understand that Maureen has taken responsibility for it. I do have a question for the city clerk. Just going forward, because I know you guys are busy, is there like a checklist or something or, you know, that would just do this? Because I've been in the office and I know that it can, you guys can be scrambling. And once you have the meeting set up, I think it would be great just to have, because one of the things that Mr. Kapantis put was the verification of the link. And I don't know what the right timetable is, but maybe a checklist for each meeting, just like you have for who does, you know, for roll call votes or something like that. So that's my question to the clerk.
See if I can answer that. We've been taught how to post meeting notices when we went on, when we got this website. And then when Zoom got added to it, it's just something that's sort of, there's no checklist that you can bounce it against. I think that like the most important thing and that, you know, Maureen will do going further, further is that when you have to copy the information and if there's a thing that you can just copy and paste onto it, there's a lot more that comes on and you just have to get rid of what you don't need. That's where, that's where she, that's where the mistake was because of using the last one that, that she had saved. I think that's where it is. But there is no checklist, it just happens. You, you match it to the meeting that's being held and that's it. I don't know how to say that, you know, checklist to be able to do. It just sort of happens through the process posting the meet. Sense.
Counselor Cohen?
I just want to follow up. I mean, maybe checklist is the wrong suggestion. You know, during that meeting, once we knew that, because there were a lot of presenters here and we knew we were not going to take a vote, I think the decision by the committee was to allow people to present and ask questions from the committee and the public. But is there any, I mean, I don't know what the timetable is. If you find that there's a mistake, you know, like the date is wrong, because I know, you know, a lot of the counselors were trying to pull it up and it was coming up with the March 2nd date. Is there a time that things need to be changed to make it a legal meeting?
Generally, meetings are supposed to be posted 48 hours in advance. So if you, if you notice that there's an error and there's time to correct it and amend the, the posting, then you should do that. If you find, if, if your meetings are posted as hybrid and you find that the Zoom is not working, you should discontinue the meeting until it's properly rescheduled. So that, that gets to another point that I wanted to make. We did reach out to the AG's office, they have a division of open government. And what they did say to us was, if you are meeting in person, there's no requirement, as you know, to have the Zoom meeting as well. And they indicated to us that what a lot of communities do, if they do have a hybrid option, is to make the in-person meeting primary and that the language on the meeting notice says that you will be, you know, if tech, if technologically feasible, you will be able to view on Zoom or SATV or whatever it might be. But that is a secondary, not primary purpose for which, if you want to make a public comment. They said if we had done that, that would not have been a violation. So the issue that we have is that we make them equally important, the Zoom and the in-person. So what a lot of communities do is they say the primary, public testimony will be taken in person and for convenience purposes, the meeting will be also provided on the Zoom link. They don't make that as a, as an and, they make it a, like an alternate. Does that make sense?
Thank you, Beth. Yeah, I mean, just to follow up with that, you know, I, I think we're, you know, on the right track with the city of Salem where we're not required to have hybrid meetings, but we attempt to do so. And all we can do is continue to make sure we can put operating procedures in place to make sure that we don't have these kinds of things happen. So overall, I think it's great. We still have, you know, the opportunity for people to zoom in at home. And so I think we got to keep going with this. So with that, Counselor Merkel?
Thank you. Yeah, interesting conversation. First, you know, to the point that we didn't have to have no hybrid meetings when we went back in person, that we wanted to and not all cities and towns chose to do that. So I do want to say thanks to our city clerk's office and IT and SATV, you know, for wanting to make the commitment to enhance public engagement, which I also do too. I mean, we, I think the hybrid has been, you know, a great opportunity to, to keep everyone's voices engaged. And, you know, this is still relatively new. I think it is an interesting concept to, to consider that taking a look at it being, you know, secondary because I think it's, I think it would be tricky to rule out any IT issues. I run a lot of Zoom meetings at home. I'm on many boards with, you know, with different organizations and IT issues, you know, happen. So I would, I certainly want to keep, as, you know, as Chair Varela said, going down this road because I think it's been great. But I would consider examining, you know, the language of, of how these meetings are posted, that they are in person. And it sounded like we will be making every, every effort to make a secondary option for remote engagement and viewing. And of course, continue to have it, you know, as flawless as humanly possible, that we do want to check, you know, every, every Zoom link, we want to, want to check that, you know, everything, you know, that we all, you know, I've, I've been at the trainings that we've had, you know, with Eileen trying to, to learn. I'm not an IT person. This has been, personally, this has been a really big learning curve for me. I'm not an IT person and, you know, I've, and the trainings, you know, are out of, you know, my, my regular area of knowledge. And I do want to continue learning and offering this 100%. And I think it is worth looking at that because we just don't want to invalidate meetings. Our meetings are important and I think it's just impossible to never have an IT issue. So I would consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Merkel. I do have Counselor Watsonfeld.
Thanks, Chair Varela. Yeah, I have a couple of questions for our Madam City Solicitor. Please, I can't see you all, so let me know if I need to give someone some time. My first question to City Solicitor Renaud is a procedural one with regards to the language change. So is that something that the legal department can recommend and the change be made? Or is that something that the council has to take up? Is it, is it, do we need that level of sort of specificity and clarity around edit, editing that language?
Right. That is something that I will bring forward at another meeting for the council to consider.
Okay, great.
I just wanted to mention that with respect to the complaints, I just wanted to mention that there lies the issue with respect to hybrid meetings.
Yeah, so that's my, so my second question might be related, which is if we were to make that change, there's nothing stopping the chair to still take public comment virtually from folks who join on the phone as long as the technology is working, right? Or is, or is there now, are we now saying that if you want to participate in real time, you need to do so in person?
That is something we'll have to discuss. It could be either or, but that's something I'll, I'll, I'll put a memo together, get that for the next council meeting.
Great. Thank you for that. Yeah, I think, you know, just to echo some of the comments that were made by Counselor Merkel, I feel very similar. As I am myself remoting and will be doing a lot of remote participation as a city counselor in the next coming number of months, I think it's really important that we, that we continue. I think it's wonderful that we have this option so that we can all, including all residents, can participate to the best of their ability when, when they really care about something and they want to make their, their sort of presence and position known. And I also, I also think it's important for accessibility for other folks out in the world that may not find it as, as easy to get to City Hall or maybe have multiple jobs or, you know, they're single guardian households and they've got, you know, kids that they're taking care of. And there's a lot of equity in, in, in developed in the option of having hybrid engagement. So I just want to make sure that we're super duper clear about if we're limiting, if we're, if we're continuing to enable, right, the virtual participation, but I definitely also don't want to necessarily limit participation virtually, if that makes sense. Access and, and participation, you know, being sure that we're being really intentional about both of those sides of the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. So real quick, I just wanted to address the meeting that we had as far as what's going to happen. So obviously, it's still in committee. We will be meeting on the, to discuss again on a date, future to be, future date to be determined. And that recording will be posted. So we'll be in touch with what the next steps are. Luckily, it was a really good informative session and there's a lot to cover concerning this matter. So looking forward to another meeting. Before I do open it up to public comment, I just wanted to put it out there that the committee should designate the city solicitor as the respondent to the complaint with a copy of the Attorney General with Public Health and Safety Response and, and the complaint and the actions taken. So someone from this body will have to make a motion on that. But before that, I would like, you want to make a motion? Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Chair. Some, some further questions and some comments. I appreciate the feedback from our solicitor with respect to the language included in the agenda. I had, thinking about that a great deal myself. I think as it's written now, it is not necessarily clear to the public whether they're going to be allowed to participate in the meeting or not. We are not required necessarily to take public comment at every meeting, but the language of the agenda sort of gives the impression that the public will be able to fully participate whenever. And so I think, I think that is an important, that is an important point to clarify and probably I think something that we as chairs should clarify at the beginning of the meeting as to whether we are going to be accepting public comment during that meeting so that people are clear. Excuse me. I do have a question for, a further question for our solicitor, which is related to this point about public comments. If we were conducting the meeting that we're talking about in a fashion where we weren't taking any public comment, so it had been a meeting where we simply were hearing the presentation, having our discussion and then closing the meeting, is that important to the sense of whether a violation has been committed if that meeting was not accessible via Zoom but had still been recorded, broadcast on SATV and been made available for people to review at a later date? Or is it still a violation simply because we said you'd have some sort of access through Zoom and you didn't get that access?
Yes, we made the Zoom link equally important to the in-person meeting, in my, in my opinion.
Thank you for that. And I do think that there are, I have some technical questions that I would like to be answered in terms of what, what actions we can take and redress in a situation like this because I think Counselor Merkel is correct. It's, it's unlikely that even if we codify the procedures that we are using to set these meetings up, it's unlikely that we're going to remain 100% error free over the course of running hybrid meetings into the future. And so I think it's important that we have some technical knowledge about how we can remediate in the moment. I did have some follow-up conversations about this with, with, with other individuals who are more experienced with Zoom. And I did get some feedback that there is a way, in fact, when you miss schedule a meeting to simply start that meeting anyway, in which case it may have been possible for us to just use the links that were posted and proceed successfully. And that's kind of an important question, right? If we had had the ability and the knowledge to simply start the meeting with what was posted and everybody had had access, we wouldn't be discussing it. So I do think we want to make sure that we are looking at the real Ps and Qs of the procedure at that level before we start to codify things. That said, there is a procedure that's being used, whether it's codified or not, some steps are being taken, right, to set these meetings up. So I think it's a reasonable request to say, can we have those things codified and reviewed, make sure that they make sense? I know that our, our city clerk has already done a lot of work with us in terms of how we administer the meetings. We have that sheet, right? We do have, in fact, a sheet that codifies how you set up and run the meeting when you walk into the room. And we did have trainings around it, right? So what this means to me is just having that same level of specificity and that same level of care going into the setting up the meetings, even the step before that. And I think that's a pretty reasonable request. So I, I don't think that necessarily needs to be enshrined in a resolution, but I do think it's reasonable to say, can this be generated, reviewed by the committee and everybody understands what happens, receive it and file it? And then everybody has a sense of what's going on. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. So with that, I'd like to open up the public comment. If you'd like to step up, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Steve Kapantis, 23, West Area Street, Salem. First, thank you for taking this up. Second, I am pretty satisfied with the response from the clerk and the city solicitor on the steps that they're suggesting. I'd like to make one other suggestion because this is an issue not just for this committee or this board, right? And I'm sure much of your, I apologize, much of your checklist may have been due to complaints and conversations that I've had with the city solicitor from day one on Zoom. We've had a hard time adjusting to Zoom. When we first started, we had people running the meeting deciding who was going to be in the meeting based on their screen name. If you logged in with a screen name they didn't like, they didn't let you in the meeting. We had people who had control of the Zoom, who were not the chair of the meeting, who were deciding who could have their hands raised. And that person had to raise their hand repeatedly, 15 times, until someone else noticed that someone was lowering their hand to call on them. And that person had to raise their hand repeatedly, 15 times, until someone else noticed that someone was lowering their hand to call on them. We had meetings that went into executive session and they didn't know how to break out into a new room. So when people didn't leave the Zoom, they kicked them out. But they kicked them out permanently, so when they came back, they couldn't re-enter it. So when this last one happened, it was the proverbial straw, so to speak, which said, okay, enough's enough, now it's time to file a, file a complaint. So my suggestion is maybe on the preventative actions, because this really affects every city and board in the city. That out of here comes a recommendation. Then it goes back, I don't know, maybe to all or maybe to one of the other ones. They give more time to see how do we do this? How do we verify and validate links the day we make them? There's other things, I don't think the city has enough seats on their license. At one time, you were sharing seats, you know, the planning board and this one. Well, we can use it for this one. Every board and commission should have their own seat. This would really eliminate a lot of this from happening. So then when the clerks or the assistant clerks go in and they are bringing up from the last one, it's always the Ola one that has the right link. And then they can click on it and say, yep, it's working. So I appreciate your time and effort. I won't be going further with, with the AGs based on the suggestions that, that were made tonight. So I look forward to the improvement, not just here, but across the board.
Thank you, Mr. Kapantus. And I do, I do heartily agree that, you know, the service we offer of remote, especially with our boards and commissions, depending on which board or commission, can be somewhat frustrating because it's either hard to follow the meeting or there's a lack of procedure. And I think that's important and we need to have a discussion about that, not only just city council, but our other boards and commissions on how do we make the remote aspect of our meetings a little easier to, just clarity and easier to actually engage with. So thank you for that. Counselor Cohen?
So I'm going to make a a multifaceted motion. So I move that the city solicitor is listed as the respondent. And if there's any language from the AG's response, that she would include that. Also, I move that all the presenters at the previous meeting are invited to be at the future scheduled meeting. And any of them who are unable to attend, that the chair requests a summary of what they presented. And that at the introduction of the meeting by the chair, that the link to the recording of the previous meeting is, is spelled out.
All right, so Counselor Cohen would like to make a motion to designate the city solicitor as the respondent for the open meeting law complaint with the Attorney General's Office, as well as all presenters, presenters from the meeting for the future meeting be invited. And if they cannot meet it, a recording of it and the chair follow up any could say. We'll leave it at that. I do have a second. Seconded by Counselor Merkel. So we'll do a roll call vote since we're on Zoom. Let's see, Counselor Cohen. I'm sorry, sorry, count, go in order. Counselor Watson felt.
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Merkel?
Yes.
And Counselor Cohen? And Counselor Varela, a yes, that is four hands and a yay, yes, and queen of my own, so the matter carries. We may have another motion, Counselor McLean?
Thank you, I would just, I would like to make further motions on the matter before we close. I would, I would further move that the URL linking to the recording of the prior meeting be included in the agenda when it is posted for the upcoming meetings, that people have the opportunity to review in advance. And I would further move that that this remain in committees that we have an opportunity to see a codified version of what actually the procedure is for the creation and posting of these links, that we can see what, if anything, needs to be changed for the review. So just again, codifying what's currently happening for the review of the committee.
Counselor Cohen? Oh, seconded by Counselor Cohen. So with that, we'll have to, oh, Counselor, sorry, President Stott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, not being a member of the committee, so thank you for allowing me to speak. I just had a comment on that. And overall, I think what we have been talking about tonight really demonstrates the growing pains that we have had with Zoom. I mean, does anybody, I don't know if you all were there in 2020 when we had our first Zoom meeting and the Zoom bombs that were there. And, you know, we just went as, as Mr. Japan has described, from one thing and we'd fix that. And then another thing would pop up. And I think it really demonstrates that there has been zero guidance on how to do this. A public meeting is a public meeting in a public meeting place. That's pretty cut and dry. You open the door and you let people in. This hybrid meeting, there's no rules, there's no guidelines. Literally every city and town does it differently. I asked the city clerks to kind of do a poll of the nearby towns and cities and how they do hybrid meetings. And I believe all of the responses were, were not, it's too hard. At least the responses I saw. I'm sure there are some that do do full hybrid meetings in the sense that what we do of allow public participation, remote votes, all of that. But the majority of them were just broadcasting remotely, but not also, you know, doing what we're doing. So I really appreciate that we are working through the hard stuff and figuring this out and getting those processes done. And each little thing, you know, will, like, that was a, a great suggestion from Counselor McLean of, okay, so we have a broken link, how do we fix that link on the spot? You know, we, new things are going to pop up because this is a new process in general. You know, we're in new times ever since the world has changed. We, we learn and we grow and we figure it out as we go along. So I appreciate that. All of that said, my comment was kind of off of the, the motion about the processes and the procedures. And also to make sure that the agenda will be revised and that language is reviewed. I am a little unsure if it should stay in this committee or if it should maybe go to committee of the whole. I mean, this is public, I believe, is this PHSE, Public Health, Safety and Environment? It can, because, you know, it's, I guess, related to the open meeting law complaint. But that's kind of a bigger, broader topic that everyone might be interested in topping or discussing. We don't have any ordinances, licenses or legal affairs around how to run a hybrid meeting because there's no guideline or guidance around it. And I don't necessarily know if we should, I don't think the other towns or cities do. But it is kind of more of a procedural item that might need the larger discussion. So just wanted to throw those two out there, thank you.
Thank you, President Stott. Counselor Watson felt.
Thank you, Chair, my comments are very similar. But I think I also have a question just about the concept. So first of all, I just want to echo everything that Counsel Recardig, or sorry, apologies, President Stott just said. I also, I guess I'm asking if, and maybe this might be a Beth question. If we were to, to suggest leaving it in committee, does that have any effect on the vote we took to take action on the violation?
Both the city clerk and I would recommend that this matter be closed in this committee and that a new order, whether it comes through my office at the next council meeting or one of you bring in an order to talk about, put on the agenda, a discussion about the process going forward for hybrid meetings.
That, that is kind of, so procedurally, that's what my brain was saying as well. So, so to Counselor McLean's motion, I would want to second the first piece about including the hyperlink to the previous recording in the agenda and ensuring that that gets done. We've already taken the vote on the, the action for next steps. And, and, and one of those things being that the city solicitor's office is responding to the AG's, has been appointed to, to be our responder. And then I would, I would offer instead of the second half of his amendment to say, recommend back to the council, to close the matter and recommend back to the council that we take up the broader conversation. And whether that is, and maybe it comes to Beth's point, I think maybe it comes back to the full council and then it can either go to committee of the whole or governance. But either way, in either case, I, 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 I'm, my instinct here is that we need some sort of clean close so that rectification can occur. But again, I can't, again, I can't see any of you. So if I'm totally confused myself, please let me know.
Counselor McLean and Counselor Merkel. Eileen, please.
I just wanted to remind everybody, since this is an open meeting law complaint, this is not in a committee, this never went to committee. This is for the committee to take up and it was posted. So this does have to be, you know, closed out. And then if you do want to bring in an order from this committee or, you know, a, you know, separate order on the agenda to address the other issues, that's to be done.
Thank you, Counselor McLean.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Understanding, understanding all of the comments that were just received, knowing that we have already taken a roll call on the, on the prior motion by Counselor Cohen, is it necessary for us to close this and then reintroduce or can we directly refer from this committee and say we'd recommend to the full council that this matter be moved to the committee of the whole and just move forward?
For you, other than the open meeting law complaint.
Okay. Understood. So I will
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that answer. Sorry.
No matter before you, other than the open meeting law complaint.
Thank you.
So I will amend my motion to, to take up the prior matter that the reposting of the meeting does include the agenda to the previous recording. And then I will further move that this matter be, that we recommend that this matter be closed in this committee and that the full council bring in a fresh resolution to review the procedures at hand, since that's not technically before us right now.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Watson felt. Counselor Merkel, please.
Sorry, just for my own clarity. I'm just trying to follow everything that went on. So what would be brought in next is about the procedures for, you know, for, for our hybrid meetings. And would it include proposing the language we discussed about separating the, the remote participation as secondary? Is, is that included in, in what we would be bringing forward in, in another, in another committee meeting?
That could be part of the discussion at that next meeting.
Okay, so, okay, so it would be procedural and also we discussed, you know, the options of secondary would be what would be coming in. Okay, thank you, I just wasn't clear.
Thank you, Counselor Cohen.
Thank you, Chair Varela. I, based on what has just been said, I think we should not refer anything to the full council and we should wait until we get guidance from the city solicitor and that goes to the council and then the error can be referred to the committee of the whole as President Stott. That's my opinion.
Okay, so with Counselor McLean's motion on the floor, seconded by Counselor Cohen. Sorry. Sorry, Watson felt, sorry, Caroline. We don't. So, all right, so with Counselor McLean's motion that this matter be taken up prior, that the recording be accessible, including the hyperlink be?
Why don't, why don't we, why don't we separate the matter?
Okay.
Why don't we take up the question of making sure that we include the link to the prior recording in the agenda that's posted for the makeup meeting? Let's deal with that.
Okay, so the motion from Counselor McLean that we take up this matter for the prior recording.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Watson felt. We will do a roll call vote. Counselor Watson felt?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Merkel?
Yes.
Counselor Cohen? And myself as a yes, let's say five hand, four hands, including my own, matter carries. And then the second motion would be,
well, if I'm, and, you know, ultimate clarity, I will, I will wait for our solicitors to again weigh in. But if the matter is not technically before us right now, it's not in committee, no report's going to be issued, then I don't think there's any further action to be taken, because there's nothing here.
So with that, seconded by Counselor Cohen?
It's not even a motion.
It's not even a motion.
It's a question.
It's a question. Okay.
I think
Thank you.
Making a motion to adjourn, because I think we're done with our business.
Well, do we have to still close this order or no? Close the meeting?
There's no order.
There's no order.
Oh. We have to move to close the
Just close it.
Close this hearing.
Thank you, Counselor Cohen moves to close this hearing, seconded by Counselor McLean. Roll call vote, Counselor Watson felt?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Merkel?
Yes.
Counselor Cohen? Counselor, myself as a yes, that is four hands, including my, my own, the matter carries. Counselor McLean?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, seconded by Counselor Merkel. Since it is Zoom, we do one more roll call vote. Counselor Watson felt?
Yes, and thank you.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Merkel?
Yes.
Counselor Cohen? And myself as a yes, that is four hands, including my own, meetings adjourned, thank you, everybody.